Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 26th. If we could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, would you call the roll, please?
I would be happy to call the roll. Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven members present, quorum.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain anybody who would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that.
Dr. Raridan.
My doctor, Raridan, okay.
Yes, Hugo.
Supports.
Supports by Hugo. Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll open the floor for public comment. Anybody who would just make public comment? Okay, seeing all. If you want to make public comment, we'll close and bring back to the board. And at this time, we have Ashley Warner from Rose Pest Solutions here for a privileged presentation on a mid-season update for mosquito control program. And the mosquitoes have been great this year, at least around my home. I haven't seen many of them, so.
I haven't seen one.
I'm attributing all of it to the township mosquito.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's Warner, right?
Warner.
Warner, okay.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, night and day of this year to last year, the weather, we had a pretty decent spring. We did have water out there, not quite as high as the spring before. We started larvicideing on April 18th, doing the priority areas, the areas that we know are typically bad that cause problems. To this date, we've put out still 9,600 ounces of larvicide, so every three weeks, we're still going through that rotation. We're finding some areas that are completely dried up. We have a swamp between Sarah and Rise Cliff Road that's usually wet all year long, and it's all dry. And there's years where it's up to our hips and we can't get in it, so it's pretty dry out there. We have had, we've had calls coming in, but they pretty much slowed down in July. May, we probably had 150 or so come in pretty quickly, and I think that was from the quick dry up. When you have a little bit of water and it dries up within a week and a half, I mean, everything hatches at once, and then we calm it down, and it should just carry on through. Last year, it didn't cooperate that way, so unless we get a lot of late rain, we shouldn't see too much in that sense. We've had a couple, three of our 14 traps have had a little bit of higher numbers recently, but we've been addressing the areas around it, in the water areas around it. It's over on Cold Spring and Woodfield Parkway, that area, we've had a little bit of an uptick, but nothing to cause the traps to be high enough to do any fogging on the roadway. We've had 408 calls to date. As of Friday, we only had eight to address. When I looked today, we had none to address. They were all dished out, so we haven't had anything come in recently. We've done 343 barriers, those are the foliage treatments. And we've laid down 6,200 bricks, that's the brick larvicide that we put down in the deeper swamps for the entire season, and then also what we put in the catch basins. We've only used 70 ounces of larvicide, so that would be the fog material, because we haven't had to do any roadway fogging this year yet. So, like I said, night and day from last year. We've put in 1,680 hours. And then we've had no positive West Nile cases. We haven't had any in any of our townships, in any of our six townships, so.
Yes, a question. Clerk Robertson?
We all remember last year, and that we were getting two years' worth of mosquitoes in a single year. So, the fact that they're not, I mean, it's been dry, does that mean that the mosquitoes are dead? Or are they just waiting in the wings to come out again?
I mean, I'm sure there's eggs being laid, because they still go through their process, the ones that are still out and foraging. They're still laying eggs in the damp areas, so those have the potential to hatch if we get a lot of rain, but that's what our larvicide process is for, so hopefully it won't get ahead of us like it did before.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. White?
What areas are still, you said Cold Spring and Woodfield? Are those always areas that are?
That are higher, yeah, they always are, but they, they were only, we were only collecting probably six or eight mosquitoes every time we checked the traps there, and now it's doubled. And so, we have seen a decrease over the last week, but it had gotten up to 17 or 18, so we were just kind of watching those areas closely. But Woodfield Parkway has always been.
There's a lot of standing water on Woodfield, right?
Yep. Any other questions?
Anybody else? All right, we're very pleased with the level of service we get, and very pleased with the lack of mosquitoes this year, so.
Me as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ashley. Okay, at this time, I'll ask if anybody would care to make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Supported by Mr. White.
Supported by White. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. Under old business, the board will continue discussion on the township road funding policy. I know that on Thursday, we're going to, we've planned to take a look at a couple of streets that Mr. Sears would recommend, that if we were going to go this route, that we would consider these particular streets. And I know that's something that several of us said we wanted to see, maybe before we take some action. Mr. Limata, Mr. Roberts, myself, Matt, Mr. Sears has been on vacation, so we haven't had an opportunity to sit down with him yet to discuss the policy, so I guess I would like to wait until after we take a look at the streets and have some more discussion before we move forward on it. Everybody can take a look at the language and see if there's some adjustments you want to make. I think, you know, one of the things, we did receive an email from a resident who, you know, had recently their neighborhood, basically, I won't say rejected a paving project, they didn't get enough signatures to move forward, but she was upset that we would go in after, you know, they had, I'll say, voted down doing a special assessment district, and that we would go in and just ignore what they had decided and do it anyways. And what Mr. Sears explained was that, to this individual, that probably more of the case would be for those subdivisions that haven't been able to even get close to getting the signatures, but they want to move forward, you know, where maybe it takes, you know, 300 signatures to move that subdivision forward, it's not even, you know, feasible for somebody to try and get that many in a summer, probably. So, those would probably be the neighborhoods we'd focus on, so. I mean, I haven't heard anything more from that resident, so maybe that alleviated her concerns, but I think one of the things Mr. Robertson pointed out when Mr. Limata and I met, or we all three met, you know, if there's a way to bring these residents together, discuss our concerns with their neighborhood, you know, I think that's what we want to build into that policy, and I think that's what we've tried to build in, is that we're going to use this as an educational type thing to bring those neighbors together and say, hey, we've got to do something with your neighborhood, and here's one of our possibilities that we could do, and we can see how many people are interested at that point, but, or how many people would be opposed, so.
I'm, the new development is the Genesee County Road Commission and the potential for, first, providing some additional funds. I think that's, let's flesh that out and see whether that's, I noticed that the emphasis is on potential policy. Let's find out whether or not that's potential or real, because that's a variable in the equation. And, and so.
You're right.
Appreciate the conversation.
You're right, Clerk Robertson. One of the things, and Dennis, I know you've jumped in here if you want, but one of the things that has come up, I had a Roads and Bridges meeting with the Road Commission last week. One of the possibilities, they are looking, and is in the packet, I believe, information that they're looking at is they want input from our board, and they want, from every board or every township. What they're looking at is, you know, last year, Mr. Limata and I met with the Road Commission, and we said, hey, look, our, our primary roads or our main roads that you would use allocation money for are getting to be to the point where they're in pretty good shape. They came up with a policy that proposed to us, that if 70% of our main streets are paved, then we could start using some allocation money towards subdivision streets. They've also come up with $500,000 they want to devote each year to subdivision streets, where they would match, do a 10% match on the subdivision street for the actual construction. So, for example, if, you know, it's $500,000 to pave a particular subdivision, you know, they would take 10% of that cost, we'd take 10%, and it'd come off the top, plus they'd still provide the engineering. The, it isn't a certain thing yet, but it would go up to $150,000 per township as maximum that they would give. If the money isn't, that 500,000 isn't used from the rest of the townships, they would probably have a second draw on that money, so there's a chance you could get more than 150,000. Grand Blank Township has more subdivision streets than any other township in the county. So, that's one possibility of helping defray the cost to some of these subdivisions, that if they could get 20% right off the top, and then, Dennis, refresh my memory, how did that work with, there could be additional amount as well, right? I mean, if we could use.
Yes, our allocation funds, so if you, if you look at the way road funding works now, we have a 50-50 allocation, and what that does is they, we match 50-50 with the Road Commission on typically section line roads in the township. But when ours don't have any projects going, what would happen then with that allocation is that we couldn't, it couldn't be used, so it left. You know, we allocate $190,000 a year towards that. It means nearly $200,000 a year wouldn't get used, because our section line roads weren't in need of it, and they wouldn't let us use it anywhere else. So, when we proposed it, they said, well, that'll require a change in policy, and they ended up changing policy, so we can use it. So, when you start to think about this new development, where they're going to, you know, throw out another $500,000, $150,000 per township, so you look at taking the cost down of that project, we can use our allocation funds, combine that with another additional $150,000, that might be enough to push the project that people were reluctant to sign the petition for, when they see that, you know, especially when you combine it with the engineering, that, you know, 25 or 30% of the cost of the total project is being picked up by township allocation funds or this additional funding through the Road Commission. It certainly would make it more palatable and maybe take it down, but we looked at a couple of examples, and just to look, and, I mean, it could have the difference of a couple hundred dollars a year for folks on what a special assessment means, and that could make the difference between an approval or a denial.
And some of these, you know, I don't know, I believe the road paving costs have jumped significantly. I think we've looked at a few proposals or a few estimates for some subdivisions that wanted to look at it, and the prices are just through the roof, they're more than $20,000 per parcel in many cases, or in several cases, which even over 15 years, you know, you're looking at more than $1,000 a year, but, you know. The road's crumbling away, I guess, you know, you have to make that decision, so. So anyways, we'll look at these, hopefully everybody's going to make it on Thursday, and we'll go and take a look, and we'll have some further discussion. Yes, Mr. Limata?
And I will point out that included in the packet was the Pazer ratings for the townships. When you guys look through those, and we start talking about that additional policy of, what if they fall below a Pazer rating of two, or it's a Pazer rating of one or two? If you look at all those individual sheets, you can see who we're talking about, what streets we're talking about. There's quite a few, but, I mean, it's not everywhere, obviously, I mean, the township, all in all, everybody wants their roads to be perfect or good or better, but that does give you a better idea of who we talk about. If you guys were to start moving towards the change to the policy to make it board initiated, those are the streets we would be talking about where that would occur.
Right. And just as a refresher, because I see on social media and what have you, and I know as board members, you're probably getting questioned, Cook Road is absolutely horrible between Embry and Holly. We're scheduled for, it's, the road needs to be completely rebuilt from, basically, you see how much higher it is than most roads. They need to take it all down. The problem is, is that road used to be gravel, and I've talked to residents who were here when it was gravel. And, you know, 50 years ago, they'd just take a gravel road and pave basically right over top of the gravel. They might mix some concrete dry mix in with the dirt, but it's basically dirt underneath that road, and then just layer upon layer of asphalt. There's no drainage whatsoever. To rebuild, it means put, you know, I don't know what it is, eight inches of gravel or whatever, stone and sand, and basically be able to move the water from under the road. The problem is, it's extremely costly to do that. The county has basically secured federal funding for rebuilding that road in 2024. And if they do anything to that road in the meantime, we'll invalidate them receiving the federal funds to rebuild it. So, the most they can do to it right now is patch it. Our hope is that, you know, with the pathways, that we are able to come up Embry, or come up, come down Cook from the Dort pathway, in fact, we'll talk about that in a minute, but, and then go down Embry, which, if we're working on Cook in 2024, it'd be a perfect time for us to work on a pathway under that overpass as well.
I spoke to one of the residents of one of those big subdivisions on Cook, and told him that, because he asked me about that, and I said that in 24, it was coming, so I'm hoping he goes to his HOA meeting and tells everyone there, but.
Right, yep. So, it'll be a significant improvement when they do it, but unfortunately, we've got to make it through. They said they'd pave it, you know, but it's kind of like, it'll be crumbled in two years anyway, so it's better to, I guess, hold off and fix it right. Okay, so, next on the agenda under old business, the board will discuss the upcoming Board of Trustees work session. I know Mr. Limata put together a schedule, and I'm not sure anybody had any input on it or concerns.
Well, one thing that I'd like to see is, you know, you talk about these Pazer ratings, one through seven. I'd like to see what a one is, and what a two is, and I, then I'll have a better visualization as to, all right, yeah, this needs to be replaced, this is.
I'll have you over my.
Unsafe.
Really?
Then we'll go over to my house.
For a good road.
For the good road.
Okay, we plan to, we plan to go down a few ones, and probably we'll see a two, but there's probably not a whole lot of distinction between the two and a one, but there definitely is between a two and a, you know, six or what have you.
I mean, I thought if everybody's here at 3:00 on Thursday, we'll start off with that board tour. We'll have three vehicles ready to go, and everybody will be on Bluetooth so that you can all hear the same information between any of the vehicles. We'll take you across the street, and we'll run through Pazer rating two streets, hit a one if we can get there. And we thought, we want to show you the ARPA and county-funded projects over at Bicentennial Park. We want to show you infrastructure with the Embry Road Pump Station. We want to go through the new Dorde Highway Extension and show the non-motorized pathways. Fire Station Two, we've got some boards out there, so you guys can see where those ARPA funds are going to be spent for the remodel there, and get an opportunity to see that building from there. The Enterprise Park, I did get some plans with the developers, so we'll drive you in and show you the Fessler Bowman, where the new 200,000-square-foot Dag Enterprises building is going before Fessler Bowman, and then kind of show where that development is, got some great plans of what that looks like. And then we'll leave there and go to the Senior Center, and Senior Center Director Misty Mullen will meet us there and kind of give us a quick tour of the Senior Center as well. But it gives you guys, you know, we can check on the roads, we can look at where we're spending some of the ARPA funds, we can look at some infrastructure projects, we can look at some of the economic development and the fruits of our labors from the DDA and economic development, the Baldwin Road upgrade, that kind of thing, and then get us back here, probably within, you know, I said an hour, so that probably means an hour and a half, but have you back here, and then we can jump into the strategic plan items, and hopefully get everybody out of here at a reasonable time.
Is it 3:00? Not 4:00?
3:00.
And where are we meeting?
We'll meet right here at 3:00, and we'll have the vehicles ready to go, and we can bring everybody so you all see the same thing and hear the same thing, and, and the only other question we had is if, I don't know if everybody's been through the police station, if anyone needs to see the police station and how that's set up. I know you guys have been in the auditorium, I don't know how many of you have taken a full tour of that building. We can arrange to have the vehicles drop us off at the police station, and we can walk you right through and walk you right back to this building if anyone's interested in seeing that for any reason.
Anybody want to see it?
It sounds like a productive afternoon to me.
It's a beautiful building.
And we'll probably have something to munch on, too, when we get back here, so. I know I have another meeting I have to be at at about 6:30, 6:45, so we need to be.
We've got a hard close by 6:30.
Yes, so.
It'll be Melissa's birthday, and she really wants to get out of here.
Okay.
We'll keep it a secret.
Listen, 40,000 of our closest friends in Grand Blank Township, all right.
All right, very good.
All right, very good.
So, under new business, the board will consider a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the selection of an executive search firm to assist in the recruitment for our next chief of police. Mr. Limata?
So, we, actually, I had the police committee come together, and we had a conversation, but how the policy worked is I sent out requests for proposals to a group of individual executive search firms. We had three responses out of five, the other two, well, they did respond, they just didn't have the ability to meet our timeframe to assist us with the search. We brought the police committee together, and we went through all of the profiles and discussed the pros and cons. I can tell you that all of them can do the job very well. The cost of running the full search is between $13,900 and $24,900. For that price, what you'll get is they will talk to the stakeholders, the board, myself, obviously, anyone that we want to, to get a, narrow down who our ideal candidate would be, what we're looking for. They'll reach out to each and every one of you to ask you what you're looking for in your next police chief. Obviously, we have had a focus on community policing for a number of years here, and I think it really shows, not only just in our accreditation program, but the respect and the amount of accolades that Grand Blank Township Police Department receives on a statewide basis. I think we're going to have a lot of candidates. They're going to take and put a brochure together that touts Grand Blank Township, that explains what you're specifically looking for in your next police chief, and then they will go out and do the advertising for us. They'll perform the initial screening to wash any candidates who, you know, obviously have some background issues. They'll compile a shortlist, work with me on going through and doing those and creating the interview questions. I've already asked Chief Wiles to assist us with a couple of police chiefs from outside of Grand Blank Township, obviously, to sit on panel interviews, to assist in those initial screening interviews, with the idea that based upon our candidate profile, the responses we get, we're going to put the final few candidates together for a more intensive interview process, with the idea that we'll narrow it down and then bring that candidate to the board for consideration. They will, they all have a timeline that holds about the same. I told you when we first discussed that, it said it's probably about a six-month timeframe, and that holds true based upon the timelines we received from the respondents for the executive search firm.
So, you and the police committee will decide which one of these three firms will be, or when we'll use?
Well, the board's going to decide, and I'm going to tell you our recommendation. My recommendation was to use Walsh Municipal Services. I know Frank Walsh very, very well, he's highly respected in this. He's done a lot of city manager and police chief searches in the state of Michigan. Frank also brings a unique characteristic in that he is also the township manager for Meridian Township. He's been running this municipal search firm since 1996, I believe. I've worked with Frank on other occasions, I've recommended him to other municipalities. But the other two, we had GovHR and SGR, both incredible firms. You know, GovHR certainly has a tremendous nationwide reach, as does SGR. Either, any of these search firms will do a phenomenal job for us. Frank definitely has an excellent reputation with, in the state of Michigan, and certainly the ads will go out well beyond the state of Michigan. It will still be a nationwide search, but he also knows individual candidates within the state of Michigan. So, we met as a police committee, we reviewed all three proposals. The police committee was unanimous with my decision that you guys would consider offering this executive search to Walsh Municipal Services. That's, and that would be for the $13,900.
Any thoughts, discussion, concerns?
Well, if I may, Mr. Supervisor, I think, obviously, having a search firm of this type is a highly specialized individual that we're looking for. One of the challenges we have is not really knowing the right questions to ask or what to look for in a, in a, in a police chief, is beyond our own observations and that, and, and so I'm glad that we're taking this step with the search firm, and I'm glad that we, you've given as much thought, the thought to it that you have. It seems like it's a good approach.
Well, and one of the things that it will do is, we have kind of a short timeframe that we want to, you know, make this decision, but it'll take a lot of the, I don't know, we're probably going to get quite a few applicants, I would imagine, and helps with the screening process, and then also helps us to narrow the search a little bit quicker than maybe if we were just doing it ourselves. And the other thing is that we're going to be able to get the pulse of the board and Mr. Limata in terms of what type of person we're looking for, or what type of policing. As Mr. Limata mentioned, you know, we've been a community policing type of department for a while now, and, you know, that's worked well for our township and for our residents. So, we need to have some discussion as a board with, with the search firm on whether that's the angle that we see that we want to continue, or we have a different approach that we want to consider. So, I think those kind of things, you know, by somebody who's used to doing these searches, will, will be helpful to us as well.
You guys also have Dr. Raridan, who has extensive experience in conducting these types of searches as well as a resource that you guys can tap if you have any questions about the process.
Very good. So, anybody care to make a motion to? Okay. Motion by Trustee Fike to go with.
Walsh Municipal Services.
Yeah, Walsh Services. Support?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, seconded by, by Kilmer?
Kilmer, yes.
Okay, Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Another point of business, number one, if we stick to our timeline and everything goes according to plan, you'll be asked on your November 22nd meeting to approve the new police chief contract, so that's great news. We'll be moving along pretty rapidly. We also are going to have Chief Wiles out of here, August 28th is his last day, the last day of the Ally Challenge. I told you that, you know, we, I would be looking at interim chief's position. You have Captain Matt Bowserman with you this evening. Matt and I have had conversations about the interim police chief's position. We already have an agreement that we had put together when we offered the interim position to Ron Wiles back in 2016, when Chief Stam retired, so we had that together. Matt has already reviewed it, we've sat down, we've negotiated through it, and it's been vetted by Matt's union, and Matt has agreed to step up starting on August 29th and be your interim chief of police. I do have an agreement. I was going to put it into part of our closed session, but quite frankly, it's available for anybody, and my recommendation is that with the language in here, the difference for Captain Bowserman is. is that it would pay him an additional $400 per week to serve as your interim chief. All of his other union benefits are there, other than because he becomes, it's an FLSA exempt position, he won't have overtime. He'll be, well, he's working as the chief, other than the contractually obligated four and a half hours per pay period that is already in his contract. He is prepared to accept. He has signed it. I just need your authorization to move it forward. And if you agree, Captain Bowserman will be our interim chief of police beginning on August 29th, and that is my recommendation.
Okay. Does that require a motion of support?
Trustee Raridan, Dr. Raridan made the motion.
Okay. Bear with me just a moment.
Supported by Trustee Hugo.
Okay. Supported by Hugo and moved by Raridan. Okay. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, we appreciate you helping us out for a while and. Yeah. You'll do a great job. Okay. Future agenda items, after Thursday, I'm sure we'll have a few ideas on what we need to talk about. I don't know if we had something this evening. I know Mr. Fike had mentioned or to me that more discussion on the Senior Center, but I'm sure as we move through our, our tour on Thursday, we can flesh out some of those discussions and talk a bit more about that as well. Anything else that? Dennis, do you have anything that you want to add?
I think I would reserve it for after our Thursday work session. And by the time you guys get through that strategic agenda and perhaps give us a change in direction or wherever we go, end up going with the board's direction on that, we'll start off again. It's our, I mean, this is a big deal. We, we're one year into our strategic plan now. You guys have made significant progress. We're making those grids big and put them up on storyboards so you have the opportunity to see them, review, look at our progress, look at where we maybe didn't progress as much as we would have liked to. You know, and we'll have all those conversations, but we want to make sure we stay the course or we change the course and then I think we start all over again. But hats off to the board. Number one, strategic planning is often difficult. A lot of people have strategic plans. If you ask them, they'll tell you, yes, we have one, we got it done and it's probably in here somewhere. If I look around, I might be able to find it. You guys have embraced this. You continue to review it every two weeks and that's the only way that you can continue to make progress on that. And it's just so refreshing to, for us as staff to work for a board who has that strategic vision and the desire to see us move it forward. Hopefully, when we go through this, we're making the progress that you wanted us to.
Okay. Good. Your next thing on our agenda, board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything with regard to planning commission?
No, I was actually out of town, planned a vacation six months ago and was out of town for the last two weeks, so unfortunately I was not there.
Mr. White?
The April, excuse me, April, August meeting is, there is no meeting. The other thing I would say is I think we may need another alternate for the ZBA. We only had four people at our last meeting, which again is a quorum, but if we end up splitting two, two, the person loses even though maybe the fifth person would have said yes. So I, I don't, I know that may be difficult to find alternates.
Well, actually, if anybody has anybody in mind for, we have a couple of different positions that we're looking for individuals to serve on committees or boards. So if any of you have friends or know of people that would serve township well in some capacity, please pass their name, give me a call and pass their name along to me and I'd like to, to meet with them. But there's a couple of different positions that we need somebody for. One is our library board, both local library and Genesee District Library. So we're looking for individuals that can serve in one of those roles. Okay. Let's see. Mr. Fike, anything with regard to Metro Alliance?
The meeting was canceled.
Okay. And Dr. Raridan, we, I think on the police committee, Mr. Limata already spoke. Anything, Mark? Okay. Clerk Robertson?
The election, primary election, of course, is a week from today and we've got the election, the clerk's office running like a top. Kudos to Lynn and the staff that she has put together. We have processed 5,200 absentee ballots so far.
Wow.
And that's the last count and we're doing them on a daily basis as they, as they come in. They're, you know, we're continuing to get, and we're getting a lot of walk up, folks walking up to the, to the counter as well and they're being processed as they come in and things are running like a top.
Very good. I know from what I see, your deputies doing lots of training in here for.
Yes, we had, we had, since the last board meeting, we had two training sessions. Both were packed to the rafters here, not only with our people, but with people from around the county as Lynn continues to be the primary source of training for the entire county of Genesee. And so those were both successful and went real well and so we're in good shape.
Very good. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM, if any of you are available, we're going to have a ribbon cutting or the Genesee County Road Commission will have a ribbon cutting at Pollock Road, and that's spelled P-O-L-L-O-C-K. At Pollock Road in Dort. There's a little bit of inside joke there because it's been since taken down, but they have a typo on it. That's the road commission, not me. All right. Even though everybody thinks everything is the township's responsibility, road signs are not one of them. So there will be a ribbon cutting at Dort and Pollock Road tomorrow at 11:00 if anybody can join us. I don't know if I mentioned this last meeting, but you know, one of the, our priorities is doing some things proactively along the corridor between Maple Road and Hill. And one of our businesses opened here on the corner of Maple and Saginaw, which is Cinema. The real night, really updated the building and cleaned up that corner quite a bit. So that's looking very nice and we wish them much success. One of the things that we talked about was the variety of county millages and where that money goes. All sudden to all of you, I received something today I didn't realize, but the County Parks Millage is actually on the ballot for coming up. And, you know, we talked about what percentage of the senior millage actually comes back to us. And I think, you know, it's probably a similar discussion on, on the Parks Millage and what we get from that. I don't think we get anything for our part. Do we, Mr. Limata, do the Parks Millage from the county or if we do, it's indirect, right?
We're trying.
Okay.
We've got something in the works right now or like kind of a two-year proposed project that seems to be pretty promising with the county board.
Very good. Okay. One discussion I'd like to have at maybe one of our upcoming meetings is personal property tax. It's something that exists right now, even though it's being pared back every couple of years. There's still, I know in years past I signed off or we wrote off a bunch of personal property tax and I just want to have a discussion on what, what we're doing to collect any of that or if there is any effort to collect it and what that is. I don't know how much we're looking at or, or if it's even worth pursuing, but I think it's worth a discussion. With that, Attorney Ladd, you anything?
Just in your closed session, I think your, the main topic will be a contract negotiation, but also you do have a, an attorney, written attorney opinion that you received as well. And so if you want to take that up in your closed session, you can, you don't have to. It's up to you.
All right. Superintendent Limata?
The fiscal year 2023 budget process is underway. All of the department heads received July 14th, I think, the initial sheets went out with their request showing them prior history over the last three years and then a detailed explanation of how to create a written narrative and justify your budget requests for moving forward. All of those were to be turned back in as of last Friday to the Finance Department. Kathy Sostak will start compiling that. And then just to update you guys on what happens from here, between this week and next, Finance Director Sostak, myself, will sit down with all of the department heads individually and we're going to walk through their budget requests and any changes that they want to make. They have to justify all funding requests, especially any new programs, any new personnel, anything like that. We review their narratives and review past performance as well. We try to wrap that up by August 12th. The recommendation for the balanced budget is due to you guys electronically by Wednesday, September 1st. I have no reason to believe that like all years past, we will have a balanced budget delivered to you electronically for that September 1st. You'll get hard copies of the budget like you did last year at the next available meeting after that first. And then generally we say 30 days for you guys to kind of review the narratives, the individual cost centers, develop questions. I mean, we're available, staff is available. We can, we can answer questions at any time or we can schedule board work sessions dealing strictly with the budget. We can do it by department. We can do an overview. It's completely up to the seven individuals here on how they want to go through that. And then once we work through those work sessions, we intend to hold the public hearing on the tax levy and budget on Tuesday, November 15th meeting with the budget adoption scheduled for Tuesday, November 29th. If there's any questions that come up or public input in between that time, we do have time to push it back. However, a balanced 2023 fiscal year budget must be adopted by the board no later than December 31st. I have a request to go into closed session like Attorney Laddie had stated on a, two contract issues that we need to discuss. First involving with the police unions and collective bargaining. We talked a little bit about the MERS actuarial evaluation that came out at the end of last month. I told you that I would request some actuarial evaluations with different tweaks to the defined benefit plan. Those are in the works. I met with Patrol for two hours last week and had a kind of a detailed conversation about the direction we might be heading in and we shared some information back and forth about where they're at defined benefit program. I do have a salary and compensation survey being completed as we speak. Talked with Randy today. I should have it in my hands no later than by the end of the week, beginning of, of next week that I'll share out with the board so that you can see how Grand Blank Township stacks up in total compensation with like-minded municipalities with full service policing. But this evening I'd like that closed session just so that we can start to formulate our negotiation plans based on the information that I'd like to share with you. I also have one I'd like to bring up about the assessing department as well.
Just a point of information before we move to go into closed session. The Ottawa Hills neighborhood, you may have seen in the news and you may talk to people that the Drain Commission has a project going on with, with the drain, the Sherwood Drain that runs through the back of Ottawa Hills and received a number of phone calls, emails with regard to maybe what, you know, the residents are saying is destruction of some fences and some trees and things like that. There's a right of way, you know, whenever you're involving a drain like that, we encountered it when Consumers Energy was putting their gas line down Dort Highway, that we had people that had sheds, swimming pools, gardens, flower beds, what have you, that actually encroached onto the right of way. And something similar, I believe, is happening with that drain area over there as well that they are trying to prevent flooding or stop the flooding from occurring, which means they got to clean out the drain. They had to bring in large equipment and to do that, you know, they had to remove some fences and things to drive those machine, that machinery down there. So you may hear some things. We referred it to the Drain Commission to figure out, you know, if some of those people need to be made whole or what have you. But just so you're aware, if you hear that, it's actually a Drain Commission issue and I would refer to the Drain Commission. So. Okay. With that, would somebody care to make a motion to move into executive session? Ms. Hugo is making the motion to move into executive session to discuss legal opinion and contract negotiations.
Motion by Hugo.
Motion by Hugo. Support by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan. Okay. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
We are going into closed session at 7:46 PM.